A regular meeting of the city council was held in person on Thursday, May 9th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice this meeting was posted on May 7th, 2024 at 3:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Uh, councillor's absent, none. Councillor Watson felt is remote. President Hapworth presided. Councillor Morcillo moved to dispense with the reading of the previous record. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Do I take a roll call vote on that one? Okay. President Hapworth requested that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by councillor Varela.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation out of God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg or fishing place where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle legacies of oppression and inequities that exist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or question and answer period. Signing must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. We have 11 folks signed up, all in person, and that's 1 minute 21 per speaker. First speaker is Jim Defalice. Sorry, Joel Defalice.
So, 1 minute 21?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So I'm here to provide public comment on the passage of amendment ordinance related to camping. I've reviewed it very heavily. I am a resident of Salem, longtime resident, graduate of Salem, and can't figure out what the real purposes of this is. Is it just, and I know it's not question and answer, but this is a thought, and my recommendations are to hopefully move it on the calendar for discussion because they're filled with verbiages and details, but there's no standard operating procedure listed. Officer arrives, there's no shelters. You just move the tent, leave them there. So there's just some confusion, and then there's some argument maybe relating to violates constitutional.
Thank you, Joel. Next is Chris Fuccioni.
Can I submit this to you and Redding?
You can send anything you'd like to email to the council or meet with us privately, however you'd like.
Thank you.
Chris Fuccioni.
Hi, everyone. I just had to change my talk a little bit. You're gonna be hearing tonight a bunch of people that have issues with the encampment ordinance because it's not humane. And there are a lot of issues that are tied into it. Personally, myself, I'm wondering how many abandoned buildings there are, both city-owned and privately owned, in the city that could be turned into affordable housing while still keeping the spirit of the neighborhoods and the quality of living for the neighbors. I know there's economic problems with people not being able to get work because of no training. This is an opportunity for you guys to do like a peach core, except at the Salem level. There's ways of dealing with the homeless, dealing with the encampment, dealing with all those issues humanely. And there's times where you have to use a velvet glove instead of a boxing glove.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next is Jess Tower.
In regards to the ordinance to amend Chapter 24, I'm very concerned about the definition of emergency shelter space that includes shelters up to 15 miles from Salem's border. This would consider Salem shelter capacity in towns as far away as Ipswich, Stonem, Boston, and Revere as part of our local bed capacity. If you've ever moved, think about how long it took to get your mail forwarded or new primary care provider to prescribe essential meds. Getting to a shelter and getting in a bed can be a monumental task, along with the fact that shelters can change their policies with little notice. Have you ever called around to area shelters to try to get someone a bed? Do you know the policies for all the area shelters, for how long people are allowed to stay? For chronically homeless people, three months is not enough time to receive the support they need to access housing, employment, and other services. What if someone has a bed at a shelter for one night but not the next, and they are stranded in a new unfamiliar place? They couldn't keep their tent, sleeping bag, or blankets, as you may only be allowed to keep two bags underneath your bed at the shelter, and if it didn't fit, you need to go without it. So you may be back out on the street without items needed to survive because the city...
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Adam Nunez. Folks, we do ask you to please refrain from clapping or snapping. This is not a sports event. Adam Nunez, please. Coyote Howell.
We talk a lot about the success of the Mass and Cast Encampment Suite, but what Mayor Wu and Boston PD is not being transparent about is about how expensive it is. According to wgbh.org, Boston police officers logged nearly $4 million in Boston police overtime between 2019 and 2020 for the work at Mass and Cast. And that's a lot of money that could have went to community building and expansion of social services for those who need it. For a smaller town like Salem, Massachusetts, as tax-paying citizens, we simply do not have the funds to dispense a similar number to $4 million for police overtime for them to arrest unhoused folks and encampment protesters, and I don't believe police overtime resulting in $4 million is productive or helpful anyway in matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Coyote. Up next is Dee Tashara.
I stand in firm opposition to the passing of this ordinance. History has shown that this model has failed across the United States every single time, burdening taxpayers, disrupting essential services, and tragically leading to an increase in fatal overdoses. Did y'all hear that last part? Isn't that amazing? Isn't it time for an investigation? How could that be? How did that come about? We need people who don't only bemoan these things like the liberals say, isn't it a shame the homeless? Isn't it a shame not having enough health care? Isn't it a shame? You have to stop complaining about it. You have to start asking, but why does that exist? What are the forces that allow in the richest country in the world these kinds of terrible inhumanities and inequalities? We need an opening up of opinion and debate, open debate with time and effort to democratize this very serious question. We need a government body that has the capacity to go directly into not-for-profit production. If private industry can't provide the needs of the people, if the utilities can't give electricity without jacking up the rates every year, jacking it up again and again, then take it away from the utilities, and the people themselves can do it. If private industry can't build us homes and hospitals and get jobs, then let the public sector do it. There's all these people who need work, there's all this work that needs to be done, there's all this capital that can be used to do it, and none of it's come together because there's no profits in it for the aristocrats of Salem. So then let the public sector do it.
Up next is Caitlin Tracomi. Caitlin Tracomi.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Tracomi, and I'm here to ask the council to consider removing all criminalizing language in Amendment 24 that would allow for arrest without a warrant. There's many sources that show criminalizing language in ordinances is detrimental to unhoused people. A report by Housing Lab found that stable housing helps people avoid arrest. The U.S. Interagency Council on Home Business states that passing ordinances like Amendment 24 fills jails with people who are more likely to be victims of violent crime than perpetrators of it, and with people who need treatment for mental illness and substance use disorders, which jails are not equipped to provide. The enforcement of this ordinance is vague and could result in detrimental jail time for the crime of having nowhere else to go. I also want to add, I just came from Ellis Square Friends in Beverly, which supports the unhoused community, and Beverly has a no camping ordinance. I can't give someone a sleeping bag in Beverly, I can't give someone a tent. This doesn't work in Beverly, it's resulting in harassment and surveillance of unhoused people, and it's not going to work in Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Skylar Clark.
So, there has been a tendency for the council to say one of two things in response to the most obvious wrongs of this ordinance, that the law must apply equally to everyone, meaning the council has no choice but to create enforcement, often for absurd hypothetical situations in the spirit of fairness, and the law will not apply equally to everyone, meaning that enforcement will be given to the police to reasonably determine who deserves consequences and who does not. I need you to really listen to what that sounds like when you say this ordinance will only be enforced on the people who deserve it. We have conceded many times in this room that this is about the South River encampment. This is not about the good ones in the woods. Listen to what that sounds like. I need to, we need to seriously sit and think about the future we want to see if we are not willing to even consider for a moment a world in which we are not subjecting homeless people to the violence of arrests for the crime of poverty. Tonight, you will be expanding the powers of the police to allow for our neighbors to be arrested for being forced to live in a tent. Under your breath, you are saying that there are certain types of people who deserve it.
Thank you, Skylar. Ren Mester, please.
A Calvinist myth perpetuated by the ruling class is that people who have lower no income are in their circumstances because of their own bad decisions, because they deserve it. Puppets of the industry who hold governmental roles want the masses believing that unhoused people are getting what they deserve, but the reality is, is that most working people in this so-called nation are only one emergency away from complete financial ruin. That is to say, houselessness could happen to anyone. Instead of devoting time to expanding working people's access to health care and social support, this council is wasting time and tax dollars on waging war against the most vulnerable community in our city. Furthermore, with the intersection of disability and houselessness, this tent ban is a bullet in the gun this council has pointed at the future of disability justice. Voting to perpetuate violence against an already marginalized community will solidify this council's complicity in an ongoing genocide against working people. Many folks have become disabled as a result of being unhoused, and many folks have become unhoused as a result of being disabled. When the business day ends, unhoused individuals have no safe place where they are legally allowed to sleep, sit, use a toilet, shower. We need more, not less, support and protection for vulnerable humans all across the spectrum. I implore this council to vote against this tent ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Ren. That was exactly 1 minute 21. Next is Sabrina Zamliansky.
Hi, everyone. I'm here today as a student at Salem State University and the founding member of Students for Justice in Palestine at Salem State. I am here as a political science student. You all are the leaders who I am supposed to look up to. Have compassion. You are about to unleash a dirty, dirty, dirty law in allowing police activity to increase. Salem police, I have seen the Salem police with my own eyes brutalize members of my community in the point, my family members, my cousins, my friends. We do not trust the police. You are about to unleash the police on a vulnerable community. Have compassion, look inside yourself, and look what you are teaching me, other students from Students for Justice in Palestine, what to do in our future and how to rule. Your constituents here are telling you what they want. Listen to your constituents. We are seeing the brutality that the BPD has released on Emerson students, Northeastern students. Are you willing to unleash that here in your city? Listen to your constituents. Do your job, serve your city, and serve what the people want. This is what the people want. We want to help our unhoused neighbors. By doing this, you are harming them and not giving them a solution to their problem. You are making the problem worse. You are aggravating them, and you're, you are allowing the police to come in and brutalize them without, we know who the Salem police is, they've not benefited our community. The people in the point, we don't like them, and you're ready to unleash them. You're not listening to your constituents if you let this pass. Do your job, do not be Seth Moulton. Listen to your constituents, know who we are, we're here telling you. If people were here to oppose, we're here to oppose this. If people were here genuinely in favor of this, you'd hear them.
Nina Fuccioni.
Hi, I'm Nina. I'm also a student at Salem State and a member of the Students for Justice in Palestine. I'm here to let you know I firmly oppose this ordinance as well. We've seen the result in Boston of unhoused people being displaced and also the brutality that's happened against protesting students. Everyone else said much better than I did, so that's, I'll leave it with that.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak tonight. Hearings, none. Appointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointment of Liza Rueno-Rianna Lewis-Lucey to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund board with a term to expire for May 26, 2026.
Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Councillor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Just really quickly, thank you, Ms. Vareno-Lucey, for your advocacy on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and thank you for your continued advocacy.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On councillor Varela's motion for confirmation by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Sorry, councillor Cohen, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jurslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Morcillo.
Yes.
Councillor Proznuski.
Yes.
Councillor Stott.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watson felt.
Yes.
Oh, I got to end this. Go ahead.
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth.
Yes. On the reappointment of Liza Rueno-Lucey to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund board, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We have the mayor submitting the fiscal year 2025 operating and capital budget plan.
Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee of Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Councillor Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration and Finance with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. I first didn't know if the mayor would like to say a few words. Was the protocol directed to motion to...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. So I'm motioning to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak, seeing no objection. Mayor Pangalo.
Thank you, councillors. So before I talk about the FY25 proposed budget, I want to thank all the city department staff who helped put it together for your consideration, and also recognize our finance director, Anna Friedman. This year, Anna and her team were contending with a particularly challenging fiscal situation, plus the new administration, and just to pile on, we decided we wanted to try to file this budget earlier in May than had been the practice in the past, just to allow more time for discussion and review. The FY25 budget is centered on our strategic plan, but it's been shaped by more than that framework alone. Salem, like many municipalities across the Commonwealth, is contending with significant financial pressures, many of which are beyond the control of local government. In FY25, we project that fixed costs will increase by about $6.5 million. These are costs like health insurance, which by itself is increasing by around 10%, $1.7 million, making it our largest single fixed cost increase. Fixed costs also include debt payments, retirement, contracts, assessments by estate, utility and energy costs, and so forth. The total budget for FY25 is an increase of about 4.1% over last year's, but for every dollar the budget is increasing, 81 cents of that is due to increases in fixed costs. In addition, the budget's been impacted by inflationary pressures from the past year, the rapidly increasing cost of personnel as we strive to provide competitive wages and benefits, and the conclusion of one-time revenues from federal funding provided due to the pandemic. In partnership with the city council, we've put in place strategies to try to lessen these impacts. For example, earlier this fiscal year, we transitioned to ARPA-funded expenses that the city wished to see continue onto our regular budget, which lessened the cliff effect that we otherwise would be facing as we prepare for the coming fiscal year. Through a debt affordability analysis that the finance department's been undertaking, we hope to be able to tamp down future bond costs and be able to mitigate major spikes in water and sewer rates. The new energy contract for the city, which while it is going up over the previous year is still $630,000 less than national grid's basic rate, and the capital projects that were completed through our energy audit recently, or that will be completed through the energy audit based on that audit, will hopefully reduce future energy costs that we may incur and also help us meet the sustainability goals from the Resilient Together Plan. Despite all these challenges, there are still reasons for optimism. Salem's local economy is strong with our downtown storefront vacancy rate at about 1.5%. Unemployment is extremely low, and that, those facts have bolstered a number of our local receipts categories. New growth generally is healthy at a projected $1 million. Growth is really critical to funding our services for our residents without having to overly impact existing property taxpayers, creates jobs and economic activity, and also helps us meet our profound need for housing. This year, earlier this year, S&amp;P reaffirmed the city's historic bond rating. Despite that, however, given the interest rate picture, we've tried to avoid bonding for the coming year's capital as much as feasible, so you'll see that in the capital plan. In addition to maintaining our record stabilization fund levels, we'll continue to have a levy capacity that's below the limits required by Proposition 2.5. The school budget that you'll see before you in the FY25 proposed budget is an increase of 4.8%, which is 72% more than the average rate increase for the schools over the last decade. As with the overall budget, however, most of those increases are due to fixed costs. The fixed cost centers for the schools is increasing by about $3.1 million in FY25. The school budget, we're going to get into more detail when Dr. Strick is here, aligns with the district's new strategic plan. It has investments in the changing nature of educating our student population and commitments to our innovative programs like the Pre-K Partnership, the reimagining middle school initiative, and many others. Overall, the Salem public schools are progressing in a very positive direction in the areas identified by the strategic plan related to educated diversity and retention, chronic absenteeism, graduation, and dropout rates, but we still have a lot more work to do. We're waiting on the outcome of the state budget in Boston, but we expect that the Chapter 78 the city's going to receive will be somewhere in the neighborhood of an increase of $2 million. Again, the district's fixed costs are increasing by $3.1 million, largely obviating that increase. Inflation in the Chapter 70 formula is capped at 4.5%, but this year, of course, we've seen inflation much higher than that, so even with the aid we are receiving, it's not fully reflective the increase of costs that it is to provide education to our students. We're now in year four of six of the Student Opportunity Act, but we languished unfairly, I believe, in minimum aid for one of those four years, which set us even further behind where we are today when it comes to state aid for our schools. And lastly, I think it's really important just to point out that when we talk about our schools, the appropriation in the budget for the school department is not the only cost that we incur. There are allocations elsewhere in the budget that also support our schools. Health insurance, for example, is reflected on the city side of the budget, but it provides health insurance to all of our teachers, parents, and administrative staff. There are other costs on the city side of the budget related to school building debt, certain IT costs, and so forth. And the last area I want to touch on to highlight is our capital plan for FY25. So the projects that are in the capital plan that you see before you are not all the work that's happening right now in the city. Some projects are underway now, some are poised to start based on previous capital allocations from last year or the years before. Other projects that have been discussed are more conceptual in nature, they don't have a dollar cost that we can put in writing in a plan, but there's still conversations that we're actively having around those. The projects that are detailed in the capital plan that's before you are intended to help advance many of our shared goals. When each department comes in for the Administration and Finance Committee meetings, you'll have the opportunity to talk about specific projects related to that department. But just to highlight some of the bigger picture buckets, the capital plan, among other expenditures, adds up to about $2.3 million for parks and open spaces, $3.7 million for sustainability and resiliency projects, including efficiencies in our building, environmental remediation projects, vehicle conversions and resiliency work, $6.6 million for improvements to our utility and municipal building infrastructure, and additional $6.6 million for repairs and safety enhancements to streets, sidewalks, and multi-use paths. As I mentioned at the start, not all of these projects will be funded by borrowing more money. We're leveraging grants as much as possible. We have a new interdepartmental federal funding working group, and you'll see in the budget a proposal for grant writing role as well. Minimizing the amount we need to borrow will reduce future debt costs without compromising our ability to carry out important work. The FY25 budget, I feel, aligns with the operations and investments for the fiscal year with the strategic goals and objectives of the city, and continues our record of responsible fiscal practices and budgeting. Salem, as you probably know, is one of only a handful of communities in Massachusetts that annually receives recognitions from the Government Finance Officers Association, including a certificate of excellence for the comprehensive annual financial report and the distinguished budget presentation award. The plan before you for FY25 is a continuation of the approach that has made the record bond rating, the record stabilization fund levels, and those recognitions all possible. It provides a balanced and responsible approach to city finances, it invests in critical services that make Salem a city with schools in which you can all take pride, with great vibrant neighborhoods, and with a high-quality municipal services and a continued commitment to transparency. I look forward to working with all of you in the many meetings we have scheduled with the ANF Committee to review, discuss, and ultimately, I hope, enact the proposed spending plan to ensure that Salem continues to be a financially strong and professionally and thoughtfully led city. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions for the mayor while he's up there? Seeing none. On councillor Merkel's motion, thank you, mayor.
I was...
Go ahead, councillor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth, to just continue on the discussion. I also would like to thank Mayor Pangalo and also Anna Friedman and the many staff members that have worked really, really hard on this. This proposed fiscal year 2025 budget and the following agenda items regarding FY25 Capital Improvement Plan funds and other budget items requested are requested to be sent to the Administration and Finance Committee, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Then we will then proceed with the budget hearings at the Administration and Finance Committee co-posted with the Committee of the Whole meetings scheduled over a four-week period to begin this Monday, May 13th. This schedule will be posted on the city calendar as meetings are confirmed. These public meetings are for financial review of best practice, to learn about the departments and how they utilize funds, as the mayor had talked about, and what their needs are. To view the full budget and the information, you can go to salemmass.gov, click on City Government Options, then the Finance Department, and then the Fiscal Year 2025 Proposed Budget, and you'll be able to see all the information for that. I look forward to these hearings as well, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on councillor Merkel's motion or further, the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Harvey.
Yes.
Councillor Jurslow.
Yes.
Councillor Merkel.
Yes.
Councillor Morcillo.
Yes.
Councillor Proznuski.
Yes.
Councillor Stott.
Yes.
Councillor Varela.
Yes.
Councillor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
With the fiscal year 2025 General Fund Capital Improvement Program funded from bond authorization as listed below.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $3,253,363 be hereby appropriated as part of the fiscal year 2025 Capital Improvement Plan to be expended as listed below.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
With the fiscal year 2025 Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Program Fund Bond Order.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $435,000 is hereby appropriated from the routine earnings water sewer fund account to the following accounts for the fiscal year 2025 Capital Improvement Plan projects listed below.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $100,000 is hereby transferred from the general fund balance reserved for free cash and appropriated in the Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year 2025 Capital Improvement Plan projects.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $85,000 is hereby appropriated from the following receipts reserved for appropriation account to be transferred to the Park and Rec Golf Course Equipment Account for costs associated with the replacement of the Ground Master 4300 mower.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $63,155 is hereby appropriated from routine earnings pay access fund account to the following account for that fiscal year 25 Capital Improvement Plan project.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $13,147.53 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for an employee retired from the treasurer's office.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counsel Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counsel Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Yes, this is a contractual obligation, and I want to thank Eileen Cook for her service to the city.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Merkel's motion for adoption, the sum of $13,147.53 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion for adoption, the sum of $13,147.53 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account. 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the Salem City Council vote pursuant to the provisions of Master General law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to authorize the establishment of the revolving funds for fiscal year 2025.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Under discussion?
No discussion.
On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt. And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the city of Salem hereby request the adoptions of a Charlotte Ford and Park revolving account in accordance with Master General law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, which authorizes revolving accounts.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to refer this to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel moves to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. Any discussion?
Thank you. I look forward to all of this getting started Monday.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Merkel's motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Masillo.
Yes.
Counselor Proznuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Administration Finance, co-posted, we have 11 counselors voting 11 in favor and not opposed. The matter carries. And thank you, Counsel Merkel. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to rates for use of water.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move to refer this to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Counsel Merkel, or Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted. Any discussion?
Just briefly, this is a request for a change in water rates for residential from 406 to 442, for non-residential from 549 to 599, and let me see, the minimum rate for residential meter from $40.60 to 4420, and we will discuss all of this in committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. The motion to refer to OLA, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ten councilors voting, one absent, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to sewer use of charges.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall, under discussion?
Thank you, President. I just need to find my papers here. So this is a change for residential from $7.81 to $8.04, for non-residential from $11.83 to $12.18, and for non-residential per 100 cubic feet from $15.15 to $15.60.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to OLA, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to solid waste management.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall, under discussion?
Thank you, President. This is the fee that's charged for non-owner-occupied apartments, and so it's a per-unit-per-month fee, and this is going from $21.12 per month per unit to $21.86 per month per unit, with a cap per building going from $134.16 to $138.86.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the motion to refer to OLA, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to Chapter 12 relating to fees.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, under discussion?
Thank you, President. This and the next couple have to do with changing the fee structures for electrical plumbing and building permits and other services that they provide. The last time the fees were updated was in 2006. Best practice is to review your fees more regularly so that you don't have these large cost jumps. But, and so moving forward, each department is going to be reviewing their fees and how much it actually costs them to provide these services with the budget every year moving forward, so we don't have to have these large fee increases. The new fees, as with all other fees, reflect the cost of providing the services. We do look at other communities, but that's just to check, to make sure that we're in line, and if we're not, if we're not in line according to, or mostly if we're asking, if we're calculating that it costs a lot more for us to provide those services, then we take a second look. So when we say, when the city says that they look at other communities to get an idea of where their fee structures are, that's why that's done. It's not just to keep up with every community nearby. Let me see. And I will point out that these have not been changed since 2006, and when the fees are too low, it's the taxpayers that are subsidizing the difference and the real cost, and over, you know, which can be significant over the year. And since all of these will be going to committee, we will have a meeting where we can drill down on each of the fees and understand further what the costs associated are.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to OLA, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen? Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to business licenses and fees.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, under discussion?
No further discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to OLA, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. The motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Almost there, Madam City Clerk.
Sorry?
Further communications from the mayor? I said we're almost there.
Oh. An ordinance to amend Chapter 12 Building Electricity and Plumbing Regulations regarding Section 12163 and 12164.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, under discussion?
No further.
On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. The motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to pickup of large items and fees.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, any discussion?
Thank you, President. This is for picking up large items like mattresses and furniture. Just last year, we voted on the fee for $20 for picking up mattresses, and then the city made up the rest of that fee. I believe it's over $50 to pick up a mattress. So, you know, not only is this a good time to look at that and get some data regarding the number of residents that utilize that, and also the number of items that have been kind of left on the streets where the city has to pick them up and pay for it anyways, it's a good time to kind of review that data also while we discuss this change.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Morcello's motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none, motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. City of Salem, May 9, 2024, and City Council ordered that the City Council reappointment of Deborah Grill and Kate Martin to the Community Preservation Act Committee, with their terms to expire on May 23, 2026, and I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counsel Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. Just briefly, just one personal thank you to Ms. Grill and Martin for their continued advocacy on the CBC Fund. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counsel Varela's motion for confirmation by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. Motion for confirmation by roll call vote, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Committee reports. Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, May 9, 2024, the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of discussing the denial of taxi license, taxi operator license for Camilo Davani, has considered said matter and would recommend denial.
On acceptance of the report, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On acceptance of the report, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the report is accepted. On the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, President. This was an executive session, so there's no further comment.
On the recommendation of denial, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the recommendation for denial, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Communications from city officials.
We have an order submitted by the city solicitor for license agreements for outdoor dining for the following restaurants.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you, President. I move for adoption.
Counsel Stott moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. So I am open to sending this to committee, but I myself did not have any questions, and I do have two amendments, though, that I'd like to make to this order. So for those that do not see, listed on our agenda this evening, there are five businesses, restaurants, that are requesting use of public space for outdoor dining. This is the first year for our new Salem outdoor dining policy, which has multiple steps in the approval process, and there is also fees involved as well. So items that are outside of the SRA area come to us for approval as well. So this evening, we have Thai Place, Paprika Grill, Brothers Restaurant, Howling Wolf, and Barrio in front of us. These, some of these have gone to the SRA and DRB for approval. They will also go to the Commission on Disabilities for their recommendation, and then finally, they will go to the Licensing Board for final approval. So we are just one step within that process, and these still have a few more checks in place before their final approval is given. That said, I would like to make one, or I guess two amendments to the order in front of us this evening. So the first amendment I'd like to make is for the Thai Place, which is listed as an address of 2 India Square, which is, that is its technical address, so that's correct, but the location is Church Street for the outdoor dining. I think we're all familiar with that. That's kind of near Salem Cinema. The amendment to there would be for the licensed space instead of 900 square feet of public street. They are actually located in parking spaces. This is an important amendment because it does change the cost. The cost of public metered spaces versus public street is different. So they are, I believe, three public spaces. The second part of this amendment is for Brothers Restaurant at 283 Derby Street. It currently says 820 square feet of public street, but they are actually five parking spaces. So I would like to make that amendment on the order.
Second. So we have amendment to change the order to Thai Place, three public parking spaces, I'm sorry, three parking spaces, and Brothers, five parking spaces, seconded by Counsel Varela. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Is this the, sorry, point of clarification, is this the roll call for just the amendment? Just for the amendment?
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Uh, no.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the amendment to change Thai Place to three parking spaces and Brothers to five parking spaces, we have eleven councilors voting, ten in favor, one opposed, the amendment carries. Onto the main motion, the granting of these. Any further discussion? As amended. Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and thank you, Counselor Stott, for these amendments. I did, in fact, confirm with our Traffic and Parking Department when it comes to our updated ordinances about this, and I think that, I appreciate my colleagues making this amendment because this is just about keeping it fair amongst everyone that's celebrating the use of outdoor dining, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the order for outdoor dining, we have eleven councilors voting. As amended, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from city officials?
We have an order submitted by the city solicitor for exemption from Master No Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, for Carlos Hernandez.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move for adoption.
Counsel Morcello moves for adoption. Any discussion?
Thank you, President. This is the rule that if a, someone is employed somewhere in the city in a department and then works for another department at the same time, they need to get this exemption and approval from the city council.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption of the order submitted by the city solicitor, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. On the motion for adoption of the order submitted by the city solicitor, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Further communications from the mayor, from the city officials?
We have a report from the Planning Board to the City Council regarding coastal resiliency overlay district.
Counsel Morcello.
Thank you, President. I move that this be received and filed.
Counsel Morcello moves to be received and filed. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Counsel Morcello moves to receive and file. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Morcello?
Yes.
Counsel Prozynski?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
And Counsel Hapworth?
Yes. In order that the report from the Planning Board be received and filed, we have eleven councilors voting, eleven in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. I guess just from my understanding, are we not referring to OLA on this still? Because this is just getting received and filed. Okay. Maybe my agenda is different. Counsel Morcello.
You now have to take a vote on
On the
dropped in the amending of the Section 89 of the C-Rod.
Apologies for the confusion. Any further discussion? Or any discussion?
I move that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall.
Counsel Morcello moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee at the Hall, under discussion?
Thank you, President. This was part one of the three ordinance changes related to coastal resiliency, the flood hazard overlay, and the MAP. That, you know, we're going to send, I would imagine that all three will end up going to OLA for full discussion. The other two will be coming, hopefully, by the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Council Morcillo's motion to refer the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs co-posted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
And Council Hathworth?
Yes.
On the motion to refer to OLA co-posted, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Further communications from city officials?
With the following order submitted by the city clerk relative to rescheduling the last meeting in October of 2024.
Council Prozynski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Order that the city council, October 24th, 2024, regular meeting be rescheduled to Thursday, October 17th, 2024, due to in-person early voting for the presidential election. Therefore, October 2024 regular city council meetings will be held on Thursday, October 10th, 2024, and Thursday, October 17th, 2024.
And your motion?
My motion, um, to move for adoption.
Council Prozynski moves for adoption, under discussion?
I know adoption, I know discussion, it speaks for itself.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption of the order submitted by the city clerk, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
And Council Hathworth?
On the motion for adoption of the order submitted by the city clerk, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. Matter carries. Petitions?
We have a request from Andy Lippman for a street closure on Chestnut Street between Flint and Cambridge on the morning of Saturday, May 18th, from 10:00 AM to noon, rain date the 19th, to install the plants and the planters along the street and then make the street closed for safety.
Are we also taking the road races as well? Or is it, are these two separate?
No, it's two separate, but I forgot to put.
Sure. Counselor, uh, Council Morcillo.
Uh, it's, um, Council Watson.
You can send her there. Council Watson felt?
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move that this be adopted.
Council Watson felt moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you, President Hathworth. No discussion. I think that the petition is clearly, clearly worded.
You're muted. Can you, can you repeat that?
I, I said, thank you, President Hathworth. I, I think that the petition is really clearly worded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the request from Andy Lippman for a street closure on Chestnut Street, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yep.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
Council Hathworth?
Yes.
On the request from Andy Lippman for a street closure on Chestnut Street, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have six road races.
Council Morcillo.
Thank you, President. I move for adoption.
Council Morcillo moves for adoption, under discussion?
Looks like a lot of races. Good luck to everyone.
Any further discussion?
I've never had road races before, so I just, it's a first for me.
Not quite as good as a creepy clown. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none. On Council Morcillo's, on the motion for adoption of the street closures on Chestnut Street, I'm sorry, the street closures, um, I'm out of whack here. On the street closures for the road races, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
And Council Hathworth?
Yes.
On the order for the use of city streets for road races, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Further petitions?
We have four liveries, a list of public guides, and taxi operators.
Council Morcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Council Morcillo moves these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion that these be granted, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
And Council Hathworth?
Yes.
On the motion to grant, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have eight claims.
Council Morcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Council Morcillo moves these be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion needs to be referred to Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Morcillo?
Yes.
Council Prozynski?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
And Council Hathworth?
Yes.
Motion needs to be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. We have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed. The matter carries. Unfinished business.
We have the second passage of an ordinance amending, an ordinance relative to camping.
Council Cohen?
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move that this is adopted for second and final pass.
Council Cohen moves for adoption for second and final passage, under discussion? Council Davis?
Thank you, President Hathworth. I move to propose two amendments to this ordinance, um, one of which, under the section of definitions for supportive services, I would like to add the phrase harm reduction to, you know, state that we support and specifically call out that phrase and the umbrella of services that are very positively impactful for unhoused folks to that definition. So at the end of that sentence, in supportive services, mental health recovery treatment, harm reduction, or other similar services, would be that amendment. The second amendment being in the section G, storage of property. There are two places where there is a phrase 24 hours, the, the third and fourth paragraphs there, both of which I'd like to amend to 72 hours. I spoke to Chief Miller about those changes. He had no issues with them. I feel that they are consistent with a similar amendment that was made on this ordinance to, uh, to a different section that had to do with unhoused people having to leave the encampment. The timeframe that they'd be given, that was also moved to 72 hours. This would make that consistent throughout the ordinance.
So if two amendments come here, uh, the, the, uh, under harm reduction at the addition of supportive services and under the storage of property, the replacement of 24 hours with 72 hours. Is that correct? Correct, thank you.
Second.
Motion, seconded by Council Cohen, under discussion? Council Cohen?
Thank you, President Hathworth. Council Davis and I have spent a lot of time reviewing the ordinance since the last hearing. And we covered this not only with the police chief, but with the solicitor to get the language. And I think it really makes sense. And I want to thank, uh, Council Davis for all his work in, uh, in helping us revise the ordinance as we walk through the process.
Any further discussion? Council Morcillo.
Thank you, President. Um, just, just a little bit of clarity from the city clerk. If we make these amendments, the, it needs to be advertised again? That's correct. I guess, in my mind, adding harm reduction, I get it. It doesn't feel like it's, if it's not there, that it's going to stand in the way of harm reduction actually happening under supportive services because I think that is how they proceed is, is using a harm reduction methodology. And I will, I mean, I'll let you answer that if you know differently. And then the other thing is the 72 hours. I feel like, right now, we're just kind of pulling a number out of the air. I really feel like we need to, we need to see this working and we need to be taking notes and we need to be working with the public to, to understand what they're saying, to further tweak this, and to actually use data to come up with a number that makes sense. There's no, there's nothing that's been said that 24 hours is a problem. And so that's my only concern here is that we're, you know, we're editing it again. We've been through two large public meetings. We've been through the last meeting with, with amendments. And I'm just not sure if the amendments are, are important enough to have to advertise it yet again and maybe come back in a couple of months and tweak it with actual data-driven edits. That's, that's my only concern.
Council Cohen?
Just a point of clarification, President Hathworth. If we pass the amendments, it would not keep us from final passage tonight, correct?
No. So this is still within the four corners of the ordinance. This wouldn't prevent, this wouldn't require another passage after this.
It would.
It would not. It would not require another passage. What we're saying is it would have to be advertised because of the change to the amendments.
So if we pass these amendments, we still can do second passage tonight?
Still on second passage. Council Merkel?
Thank you, President Hathworth. I was wondering if we could get some clarify, some clarity then on what advertising it again, um, yeah, what, what purpose does that serve if we're still voting on it tonight? What, what does that delay? What, I, I'm not sure what that process means.
We need to suspend the rules to allow the city clerk to speak on that? Do you like to suspend the rules?
Oh, yes. I moved to suspend. I didn't know she was here.
City clerk.
Oh, the city clerk. Oh, sorry. I thought you were referring to the city solicitor. Sorry.
Council Merkel moves to suspend the rules to allow the city clerk to speak, seeing no objection. Madam City Clerk?
So because this was passed for first passage and advertised as it, as it stood at that moment, and now that you're changing it, people haven't had a chance to actually see the changes on the agenda. So I have to re-advertise it so that's open and transparent to show that there was amendments made to that disordinance. So it has to be advertised again to show that because some party that might have, you know, didn't see it in here could have came to speak about it.
Okay, so it wouldn't be so much finalized until that happens, but we still vote on it tonight?
Correct. You would vote for second passage as amended.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Any further discussion? Council Jerslow?
Thank you.
And then Council Stott?
I agree with Council Morcillo. I think we should leave it as is and we can tweak it in the future if we need to. I think that's what is in the ordinance is fine. I think if we see how it goes, we can definitely change it in the future. Thank you.
Council Stott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want a clarification on the advertising again. Sorry that we're speaking semantics again. That just requires, uh, now it will be a third posting in the newspaper, correct? So it's like a, a fee essentially, but it doesn't delay the start? Does it delay the start date of the ordinance? Okay, thank you.
It would only be two, they would only be in the paper twice.
Okay, so this, this one new one, when you say advertising, you mean it needs to be in the paper?
Yes, it was already required to put it in the paper, any ordinance after first passage, and not typically after second unless there's amendments made.
Okay, so it's like the fee involved with that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Council Davis?
Um, I, thank you, President Hathworth. Wanted to agree with the sentiment that, yeah, 72 hours doesn't come from a kind of scientific source or anything. I think the, the 24 hours, I think, just, just from a common sense perspective and thinking about people that are coming and going, maybe working, it, it, I know I'm, I'm using the phrase "it feels like" and that, you know, that's not a scientific, but I, I would hope that most people agree that that would be too short of a window to have an expectation that someone is collecting all their belongings or else, you know, that's up to discretion now to the police to be discarding their belongings they may have had for years. So I think, given the fact that the, that the chief had no issue with that, and given that, I certainly feel that that, that concern outranks the, the process issue of, of having to advertise again. Well, while I do appreciate that that is a, you know, annoyance, and, and I hope that, that we can do this. Obviously, if it's the will of the body to tackle this at a later date, that's fine, but just wanted to offer those thoughts.
Council Prozynski?
Thank you. Once again, to kind of clear the fog a little bit on this, if we vote for these amendments tonight, it does not stall the ordinance in any way. It continues on as all other ordinances and, and it's, and it's timeline. The, um, this ordinance in itself is just in its infancy. We're going to be tweaking things as they go, as they go along. I have no problem with the, with the amendments. They, they do make sense and as long as it doesn't delay, delay our process.[1542.18] it doesn't delay, delay our process, let's go forward and continue tweaking this for the betterment of the community, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none.
President Hapworth.
I just would look for clarification on the amendments, so one question, are we voting separately on the amendments, and for the amendment with the timeframe change, can you just tell me what section number that's in?
So the first of all, we're looking for the, the first section is, we are taking up both amendments at the same time, unless somebody would like to split the question, then we can vote to split the question, but as of right now, those are two amendments happening at the same time.
Yeah, where the.
Want to.
Well, yeah, that was my question, Mr. President, what, what section is the amendment in? Yeah.
Councillor Davis.
So the first one, supportive services is at the, is at the very end of the definition section, so pretty close to the top, the second amendment would be in the, in section G, which is storage of property, and then in, I don't know whether, yeah. The phrase harm reduction would go towards almost the end of that sentence, right before or other services, or something to that effect, does that make sense? I'm sorry, my app, my iPad did die.
Let's do this the old-fashioned way, my paper.
So, that very last sentence of supportive services, yeah, so, and entities that provide medical health, mental health, recovery, treatment, harm reduction or other similar services would be how it would read. And then, yep, that other one is in section G, storage of property, and that third and fourth paragraph were 24 hours, where that phrases in both times, that would be struck out, and 72 hours would replace both of them. Yes, I'm sorry, you're right, in the, in the fourth paragraph there, it has 24 hours two times, and the third paragraph just once.
Does everybody feel clear on what, what we're voting on here? And I'll wait, madam city clerk, till you feel comfortable with what you're juggling here.
I'm ready on the amendments.
Any further discussion on the amendments? Seeing none, so on councillor Davis's amendments, to add harm reduction to supportive services, and to change the storage of property from 24 hours to 72 hours, madam city clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Davis?
Yes.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Murillo?
Yes.
Councillor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councillor Stark?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watson felt?
Yes.
And councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
On the amendments, to add harm reduction to supportive services and storage of property to 72 hours from 24 hours, we have 11 councillors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, the amendment carries, back to the main motion, which is the second passage of the ordinance relative to camping, as amended, as amended, any further discussion on that ordinance? Seeing none, madam city clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Davis?
No.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Murillo?
Yes.
Councillor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councillor Stark?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Watson felt?
Yes.
And councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
On second and final passage of an ordinance relative to camping, as amended, we have 11 councillors voting, 10 in favor, none opposed, the matter carries. Councillor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth, I move for immediate reconsideration, hopes it shall not prevail.
Councillor Varela moves for immediate consideration, hopes it will not prevail, all of us in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
Matter carries. Matter does not carry. Hey, folks, we'll have an order in here right now, please. Unfinished, further unfinished business.
We have the second passage amending an ordinance relative to water and sewer meters.
Councillor Murillo.
Thank you, President, I move for adoption for second and final passage.
Councillor Murillo moves for adoption for second and final passage, any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion for second and final passage of an ordinance relative, I'm sorry, on ocean, of, got all mixed up here, on second and final passage, madam city clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Davis?
Yes.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Jerslow?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Murillo?
Yes.
Councillor Prozuniewski?
Yes.
Councillor Stark?